Yep.
Well, welcome, welcome to Roanoke City Council's regular session for August the 3rd, 2020, a 2:00 PM session. And participation today will be by electronic communications pursuant to Amendment 28 to House Bill 29, Chapter 1283, Virginia Acts of Assembly 2020, Section 2.2-3708, Code of Virginia as amended and other applicable laws and ordinances. At this time, I'm going to ask our clerk, Ms. Susan McCord, to please call the roll.
Ms. Bestbitch?
Here.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Here.
Ms. Osborne?
Here.
Ms. Price?
Here.
Ms. Whiteley?
Here.
And Mayor Lee?
Here. And a quorum is present, and it's good to see everybody. Action today will be delivered by Vice Mayor Joseph Cobb, and following the invocation, I will lead you in the place of allegiance. Vice Mayor Cobb.
Thank you, Mayor Lee. Will you join me, please? Each day, it seems, is a new adventure in exploring the unknown. Questions, changes, uncertainties, opportunities, worries, and wonder. We each draw from the wells of strength and resilience within that in some way keep us connected to what is real and essential and necessary. May we also draw from the well of support and possibility we create and sustain as a community of people who believe in each other, care for each other, and hope for each other. A world in which all can experience deep love, abiding compassion, and embodied equity, lifting the most vulnerable among us until all can know its promise, even in the stormiest of days. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the place of allegiance. Thank you, Mr. Bestbitch. A pledge of allegiance to the flag-
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice at all.
Thank you. And welcome again to everyone. This afternoon's council meeting will be televised live and replayed on RBTV Channel 3 on Thursday, August 6th at 7:00 PM and Saturday, August 8th at 4:00 PM in video stream through Facebook Live at facebook.com/roanokeva. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the hearing impaired. Each member of council has access through the Zoom meeting platform and can participate in this proceeding. The city has provided the public with information to allow the public access to observe this regular session through live broadcast on RBTV, live streaming on Facebook. The city has provided notice of this agenda and process to the public on Thursday, July 30th, 2020. City staff, including the city manager, the city clerk, the city attorney, and technical staff are present in the council chamber and are participating in this regular session. To facilitate the process today, to ensure that all council members and the public can follow these proceedings, I ask that whenever a member speaks, including making a motion, to first state the member's name, then make the motion or the second. At this time, I ask members whether they have any questions about this process, and if not, I ask the city manager to advise us if he has any comments. By way of announcements, the mayor's annual State of the City address will be held on Wednesday, August 26th, 2020, at 8:00 AM in the City Council Chamber, located at 215 Church Avenue Southwest, Room 450, by electronic communication means. Playback to be had on RBTV Channel 3 on Friday, August 28th at 5:00 PM and 10:00 PM, and on Sunday, August 30th at 5:00 PM and 10:00, 10:00 PM. The mayor's State of the City address, so that's coming up on August 26th, and will be held in council chambers, and again, we will make room for those who can come observing the distancing rules that we have. All right, presentations and acknowledgements. As a proclamation declaring the 2020, declaring 2020 as the year of the Virginians with Disabilities Act and recognizing the 30th anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act, I'm going to call on Vice Mayor Cobb to read the proclamation in its entirety, and he will acknowledge Karen Carney, Blue Ridge Behavioral Healthcare, who I think is on the phone, to accept the proclamation and offer any remarks. Again, Vice Mayor Cobb.
Thank you, Mayor Lee. It's good to be with everybody today. It's my honor to share this proclamation, and I want to recognize Karen Mikowski Carney, who is the director of the Blue Ridge Independent Living Center. And Karen, I believe that you also helped march in support for the creation of this act and were present during the signing of it. So that adds some extra meaning to your presence here with us today. I also want to welcome a couple of folks who are with us by phone. Charles Harlow, who is the chair of the board for the Blue Ridge Independent Living Center, and Stephen Grammer, who is a disability advocate, not only here locally, but throughout the state. Whereas March 2020 marked the 35th anniversary of the enactment of Virginians with Disabilities Act, which declared that it is the policy of this Commonwealth to encourage and enable persons with disabilities to participate fully and equally in the social and economic life of the Commonwealth and to engage in renumerative employment. Whereas July 26th, 2020, marked the 30th anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990, and has been referred to as the 20th Century Emancipation Proclamation for People with Disabilities. Whereas prior to the enactment of the ADA, people with disabilities were often segregated and denied equality of opportunity based on fear, ignorance, prejudice, stereotypes, labels, and spiteful mythologies. Whereas these two laws work to ensure that people with disabilities are free from discrimination, treated with respect and dignity, move freely about the community, and live in the least restrictive environment. And whereas work remains to be done throughout city, state, and federal government to fulfill the promise of both the Virginians with Disabilities Act and the Americans with Disabilities Act, and this anniversary is an appropriate occasion to reflect on the strides forward and the work remaining to be done. Now therefore, I, Vice Mayor Joseph Al Cobb, on behalf of Sherman P. Lee, Sr., Mayor of the City of Roanoke, Virginia, encourage citizens to continue to implement and work on a bipartisan basis to pursue equality of opportunity, full participation, economic self-sufficiency, and independent living for people with disabilities, and do hereby proclaim the year 2020 throughout this great seven-time All-America City as the year of the Virginians with Disabilities Act and Americans with Disabilities Act.
All right, thank you. I want to give a hand. All right. Ms. Carney, would you have any words?
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes.
You can hear me. Great. I'm never sure with this technology whether one's being heard or not, so thank you. We just want to say thank you very much for acknowledging the anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act and the Virginians with Disabilities Act. This really is a momentous civil rights act for individuals with disabilities. So again, we just want to thank you very much for recognizing the anniversary and look forward to working with you as we make sure that the City of Roanoke is accessible to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's great. Thank you, Vice Mayor. All right, now, is there anything else on that? If not, we'll move on to number three, which is the hearing of citizens upon public matters. City Council sets this time as a priority for citizens to be heard. All matters will be referred to the city manager for response, recommendation, or report to council as he may deem appropriate. Based upon Executive Order Number 51 issued by Governor Northam on March 12th, 2020, the amended Executive Order Number 53 on April 15th, 2020, amended 28 to House Bill 29, adopted April 22nd, 2020, and Section 4-0.01G, Chapter 1283, Virginia Acts of Assembly 2020, Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3708.2, and other applicable executive orders, laws, and ordinances, City Council will be conducting this regular session of City Council by electronic communication means without a quorum of City Council physically present in council chambers and without the presence of members of the public in the City Council Chamber. In order to afford citizens an opportunity to provide comments to City Council during the COVID-19 pandemic disaster, citizens wishing to address the council during this regular session of City Council conducted by electronic communication means were instructed to sign up by emailing or by calling the city's clerk's office at clerk@roanokeva.gov and/or by calling 540-853-2541 by 12:00 PM today, August 3rd. Those citizens who have signed up to speak before the council have been provided the Zoom meeting information and will be allowed to join the meeting and address City Council by electronic communication means. I will ask clerk, do we have any citizens wishing to be heard?
No, we do not have any citizens to come before council at this time.
All right, thank you. We're now move down to the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by members of City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of items. If discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. There are two requests for a closed meeting. One request from the mayor to convene in a closed meeting by electronic communication means to discuss vacancies on certain authorities, boards, commissions, and committees appointed by council pursuant to Section 2.2-3711, Code of Virginia as amended. I come to convene in a closed meeting by electronic communication meaning to discuss the disposition of an approximately 0.168, 160 acre portion of city-owned property located at Old Church Avenue Southeast, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711, Code of Virginia as amended. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Oh, Bestbitch, I move approval of the consent agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a second?
First, Whiteley. I second.
Thank you. I'll ask clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Bestbitch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Osborne?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Whiteley?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Ah, and the consent agenda is approved. Thank you all. All right, we move now to the regular, and item number five is a public hearings. We have none. Item number six is petitions and communications. We have none. Item number seven is reports of city officers and comments of the city manager. Seven A is the city manager briefings. And let me state again for the record, before the city manager makes his presentation, I ask that council members hold their questions until the end of the presentation, and I will ask each council member in alphabetical order for their questions and comment. So at this time, I'll call on our city manager to introduce the briefing.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This is the time of year where we come and talk about the public artwork plan, and at this point, I'm going to hand it off to Doug Jackson to kind of walk you through that, and then be happy to answer any questions that you all may have as a result. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Lee and Council. We come to you from the Roanoke Arts Commission each year around this time to talk about our plan for the coming year. There is the Percent for Art Fund, which is a dedicated fund for public art in the city, and each year, the Arts Commission, guided by the Collections Committee, puts forth a plan to best use those funds for the coming year. And Tiffany, you can change the slide. And this was approved by the Roanoke Arts Commission on July 21st, 2020. What I'd like to do is give you an overview of the plan and then talk about some specifics, and then we'll ask for some questions if you have any questions. And then finally, I'll request your concurrence with these recommendations. An overview, we have three funded projects new this year. One is a major project, that's our Elmwood Art Walk, and it would be under the theme, "We Are Art" this year. We're budgeting $33,000. Partner project, the Art on Site Fund for $10,000, and then collection goals for our permanent collection, and that would be for 2D art by artists of color at $4,000. We also have some carryforward projects. This year, of course, with the pandemic, we had to push some things back. We have the South Roanoke E-Branch, which we want to do an art wrap. Neighborhood's interested in working with the schools, and of course, everything's a little bit turbulent right now, so we're going to, we're on a holding pattern for that. We also have the Art by Bus Project, which we do each spring with ride solutions, and we put that on hold this year, so we'll reconsider that next year. And then we have the Stormwater Art Project, which was supposed to happen this spring, but we have artists now who have been selected, and they are, they're busy at work, and by October, we'll have six new stormwater drains that are painted. Finally, we have the NEA Challenge America Grant, and we're at work on the Greenway under Memorial Bridge with the Arches Project, and the artists that are at work, working on the sandbox and the murals down there. And on four Saturdays in September, we're going to celebrate diversity of the community and of the Greenway and neighborhoods, and have four-story hours on each of the Saturdays in September, and those will be by the Virginia Children's Theater. And finally, we have ongoing maintenance responsibilities that will be taken care of this year. Next, on the Art Walk. So we have the Art Walk, which has eight plants that are going to vacate in April. We do temporary sculpture selections, and we have two permanent pieces on the Art Walk, but eight of them are rented through late April 2021. At that time, we hope we're going to have some submissions from a lot of local artists. Currently, there are no local artists represented in that temporary exhibit, but we hope this fall to have a series of workshops with, on how to contract with the city, how to propose your concept, how to work with fabricators, and we're going to connect with some, some really good public artists and do some workshops. And so we hope that's going to help grow the number, the interest and the ability of local artists to submit for that project. So we're budgeting $33,000. We're not sure if we're going to end up putting all of the, all the pieces out at one time, or if we might cycle them through. It all depends on how the, how the workshops go and then how the calls come back. So because it might be that we do one at a time and celebrate each one of the pieces rather than do the, do all of them at one time. We have a new project, and this is a partnership strategy. We have in the public art plan for years said that when we're ready, we're going to try and see if we can use public dollars to incentivize private investment in art, and that would be art on private property that is public-facing. So say in a neighborhood where we don't have a lot of city-owned space, perhaps there's a, there's a wall on a person's building that could be used for a mural, and potentially we could use a third of city money, a third from the property owner, and a third from the neighborhood or business association, and then, and fund that art. And so we're working through the specifics around that, but we want to put $10,000 aside for that pilot project. And then the public art collection, we have a fantastic public art collection with about 160 works. We've got to be busy maintaining and conserving those. We can do more rotating them around buildings. We want to interpret them better and promote them and help people connect with the art that we have. We have one acquisition goal, and that is to get more work from contemporary regional artists of color in the collection, and so we budgeted $4,000 for some two-dimensional work. And then placemaking, we're actually going to have a new committee this year on placemaking, and that's how we can involve the community and driving projects that are artist-led, the focus on equity. So we're, want to do, and we can do this in a lot of different ways that don't really cost a whole lot, or we can partner with different parts of the city. So we're partnering with transportation, coming up with a Color Your Corner Signal Box art project, and that call just went out, and so we're going to have six signal boxes that will be wrapped in the work of local artists, and could be artists of any age. So that project, we are, we aren't providing any funding, but we are going to be the, we're going to set the selection panel and help them through that process. Similarly, there are the bus stops we've been talking about for a while now in Melrose Orange Target area, and while that project's been pushed back a little bit, we can this year reach out to artists to start working with the neighborhood to see how they want to interpret their, their space, their neighborhood, their community in the bus shelters. So currently, we have $103,500 in the account. We had committed $6,500 that last year, and so we're hoping that those projects will move forward this year, and so we're holding that money aside. And then with the three projects I just mentioned, those total $47,000. When you subtract that out, we have about $50,000 remaining in that account, and that's about where we like to keep it, to be conservative. We never know what's going to happen, that we're going to have to take care of the works we have, sometimes need conservation and cleaning. We are currently just about to clean the Sister Cities sculptures on Century Plaza. I'm looking now at the War Memorial to clean that, and that is some things we could do with, with city staff, but sometimes we need to hire an outside conservator to work on that for us. And with that, I'll ask if you have any questions.
I'll go right down the line and, and ask each council member if they have any comments, starting with Mr. Bestbitch.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Doug, for another great annual update. It really is, I think, a point of pride for us that we continue to support the arts in Roanoke as much as we can. I also wanted to commend you and others who were involved in helping the volunteers who came forward and produced the End Racism Now mural on the street on Campbell Avenue. Been a lot of concern about the fact that over time, the traffic is probably going to wear a lot of that away, and a number of people have suggested that something in Elmwood Park might last a little longer, since the foot traffic might not be as detrimental in the long run as, as vehicle traffic, and I just wondered if you've had any discussion about that, if you're, you're thinking along those lines, or what, what you think we might, we might consider in that regard.
Well, there's certainly lots of folks contacting me now about murals and projects, and I think it's an exciting time, you know, in the, in the creative place, what do they call it, creative placemaking, and people talk about it all over the country, and neighborhoods are putting their fingerprint on the place around them. There's lots of projects we can do. On that project in particular, we talked with a group about it, about how long it would last. We know that we're going to repave that street, but that was so important to them to inhabit that space in front of the municipal building. So, and even if that wore away the next day, I, I believe that space will never be the same. There's something about what happened there that's going to stay with us, but we're looking forward to more projects. I got a call today about, about one near an elementary school.
Well, thank you for that, and I just, I agree with you 100%. It, the fact that it happened made a statement, I think, beyond how long it lasts or even exactly what it says and so forth, just the fact that the city and, and a number of volunteers from the community came together to make something like that happen. So I appreciate that, and I just want to close by putting in a quick plug for something you didn't mention, which is Book City Roanoke, and I also thank you very much for your work in that regard. Anybody that doesn't know about Book City Roanoke, contact Doug or just Google Book City Roanoke, and you'll find a great, great, a lot, a lot of great information, discussions and such things as that, and I really appreciate the fact that you've taken that on as well. Thank you very much, Doug.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor Cobb.
Thank you, Mayor Lee. Thank you, Doug. It's a great report. It's nice to see the progress that we continue to make. I'm particularly always moved by the way that our artists really help transform our city, particularly when we face difficult issues. You know, oftentimes, we don't have the words to describe adequately what we're experiencing in our lives and how to convey that, but what we see through art is the conveyance of that in, in multiple different ways. And the beauty of art is that it speaks to all of us in different ways, and it connects with our life, life experiences in different ways. So to all of our artists in the city, those who've left their, their art, those who will do so in the future, and thanks to the Arts Commission for your great work. I'm really excited personally to see this new partnership strategy, bringing together the city, property owners, and neighborhood or business associations. I think that is really indicative of how we're moving forward as a city, and I think those partnerships will frankly enable us to do more than we could do previously. So I commend you all for that vision. I think that's great. The other thing I just wanted to comment on, we have a pretty substantial public art collection in our city. Some of it is visible, some of it is not, some, some of the pieces are rotated in and out, but what I'm going to ask is kind of based on, on something that I just learned recently with the Dorothy Gillespie Centennial Exhibit at the Taubman. Some effort went into creating an interactive map that people could either walk to all the different Dorothy Gillespie pieces, whether they're paintings or sculptures, most of them are sculptures, but to see those- But to see those in, in the, the city and then drive, a drivable map throughout the region. And I was wondering if there's anything in the works and if there's already something great. But if there's anything in the works, either in the form of an app or an interactive map toward all of the public art that is available in the city. I, I don't think that everyone fully realizes the treasure that we have here or how to access it or find it. I know that Ride Solutions, Tim Pullitt Thomas, you know, worked on creating kind of a public art tour by bike. And you may have helped him with that. But I just wondered if you could talk a little bit about how, what we might be able to do to more fully introduce people and engage people with the public art in our city and, and what's already in place for them to do so.
I think that's a terrific point, Vice Mayor Cobb. There is, on the, for the temporary exhibit, we have, there's an app that a fellow helped, did it for us for free. And you can listen to recordings of the, of the artists. And there, it's QR codes there, and you can scan it. And that's just on the, on the Elmwood Art Walk. But there's such a great opportunity for us to do that kind of interpretation with our permanent collection. And that's one thing that the Collections Committee will be focused on this year. And there are a variety of strategies. For instance, when BML, the Virginia Municipal League, met here, we had, did a walking tour of public art. And I think I exhausted them. It was about two, it was about two hours. And we didn't cover much territory, but there's so much rich history and, you know, pieces of the Roanoke story that you can tell through public art. We're about to have the, Roanoke's going to be the host for the Virginia Governors Housing Conference this year. And I was thinking about, you know, you can just step outside the Hotel Roanoke and walk into Gainesboro and tell such a tremendous history through art and history and, and tell our cultural story without walking people too far. So I'm trying to think, see how to, how to, you know, taper that down a little bit. There are tremendous opportunities for that. And I think even helping people connect with pieces. So I would love to hear from people, members of the community, what their favorite piece is and why it speaks to them. So I might be reaching out.